Meeting of the Raleigh City Council to order. We're going to start out this evening with requests and petitions of citizens. I'd like to remind everyone that we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes so that everyone has a chance to speak. The first is Valley Williams. And please start by giving your name and address for the clerk.
Yes ma'am, I'm Valley Williams from 2424 Shepherd Valley Street, Raleigh North Carolina, 27610 Providence Community, Rock Quarry Road, Providence, like I said Providence Community.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to my request. I'm here to ask, we have had no parking signs placed in our residential area and I'm here to request removal of these signs. Is there an appeal I can address? We have had problems with the no parking signs because the residential area is not equipped on the left-hand side to accommodate parking. I did write a letter to the Department of Transportation and Mr. Matthew Courier and Mr. Charles Howard were very kind to come out and speak with me on August 20th, 2019, and advised me that there wasn't probably much we can do except as a neighborhood to accommodate each other. Unfortunately, on the left-hand side of the road, there is no accommodation for additional parking. We have three fire hydrants which prohibit parking, I believe at six feet from the fire hydrants. We have obstruction of mailboxes, spoken to the Department of the U.S. Postal Service. There are signs and guidelines and regulations for obstructing mailboxes. We have visitor parking which presents a problem because where we have family that come in from out of town, where do they park? We have service vehicles that have no parking, where do they park? Cutting grass, problems with our homes, power washing, where do they park? We have been told that when we have visitors in town, let the department in our area, the kiosks, know that we have visitors in town. Kiosk in our neighborhood is closed on the weekend. They're there Monday through Friday, eight to five. So I'm here to ask, is there any way that the city of Raleigh can remove those signs? Do we have any rights in our community from Rock Quarry to Follow Me Way Road to remove these signs? That's why I'm here today.
Thank you.
Also, what is done is given the residents who are not considerate a throughway. They race through our neighborhood, we have children that come from, school is starting now, because we don't have sidewalks on the right side of the road, some of the children walk on the street.
My understanding is that this was a request from your homeowners association?
Uh, yes ma'am.
That's been working with staff to have these no parking signs put up, so I would assume the best thing for you to do is to talk to your homeowners association.
Oh, okay. I'm just here to figure out what we can do. The HOA has, their request was from Rock Quarry to Guiding Light Road. Okay? So what they did was take it further to Follow Me Way Road, which on the right side, there's very little obstruction.
So if the HO, so the recommend, what I would probably look at and how we can resolve this, have, reach out to your HOA because they made the request to the city and had a petition to the city for no parking signs to be put up. If the area that the HOA requested is, if there's parking signs in a bigger area than what was requested, then they can work with our staff to try to find some remedy to that situation. But this request came from the HOA.
HOA, Providence Community.
And it was a sign petition with 71% of the residents asking for no parking sign.
Well, the residents from that area, we found out that there wasn't a 70% signage because they were leased, there's only 27 houses in that area.
Okay.
And at least seven of us didn't sign that I know of.
Okay.
Okay. So you're talking, we're talking percentages, we just wanted to find out if we can get that quota.
Right.
Because many of us are very dissatisfied with the situation and we know we didn't sign that petition.
Right. So again, thank you and can we, yeah, if you give your HOA and then they contact the city staff, they work through it because that request came to us from the HOA.
Okay, so I go back to the HOA.
Yes ma'am.
And tell them what? Because they're the ones that went.
Have them, have them look at the areas that have the no parking.
Okay.
So where you have no parking listed, if the area where there's no parking is greater than what they actually requested, have them work with our city staff.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Curtis Johnson. Is Curtis Johnson here? Okay, the third person, Anthony, I can't pronounce his name.
I saw him.
He's not here. He withdrew. So that brings us to Brian Braddy. Brady.
Good evening. My name is Brian Braddy. I live at 1316 Trailers Court in Wake Forest. Once again, I'm here tonight to remind you of the murder of innocent children in the city of Raleigh that is going on under your watch and jurisdiction. The modern day Holocaust that is currently being disguised as a women's rights issue with a slogan of "My Body, My Choice." They believe that since it's their body empowers them to take the life of children through abortion. This is a poor excuse and I would like to explain why. First of all, this is an unscientific and emotional response and should be treated as such. For example, when it is said that the baby is totally dependent on the mother, they're implying that this allows the mother the right to dispose of her baby. How is this different than moments after a baby is born or a one-year-old has relied on their parents to live? Should we terminate the life of those who are dependent on life support and other machines in life or live in most hospitals today? Of course not. The second assertion is that the unborn child is inside her, his or her mother and is therefore part of her body, hence "my body, my choice." However, the unborn baby being inside the mother's body no more makes him or her as a part of her body than being inside a car makes one a part of the car or being in a building makes one a part of the building. However, these responses lose all credibility when applied to pregnancy because "my body, my choice" implies that there is no other person affected by this actions whose arms and legs are being ripped off, whose skull is being crushed and brain vacuumed out. Is it the mother's body? No, it's another body, it's a human body, a baby who is being affected by this action. You yourself understand this logic. You uphold laws in our city that prevent persons from consuming alcohol and driving in our streets to protect others from injury, yet in the case of the preborn, this logic does not apply. Why is that? By using the logic of "my body, my choice," our laws against prostitution should be abolished as the prostitute's body belongs to her. The war on drugs and its laws should be abolished as well since the drug addict's body belongs to him. Again, as I stand before you again tonight, it is ironic that the one thing that you are supposed to do is protect life, but yet you have done nothing to protect the life of the thousands of preborns since we started coming before you on this issue. This issue however, is a result of a greater issue. The issue of our sinful nature that we inherited from our parents, Adam and Eve. We as human beings who love our sin and we love ourselves, we don't want to be inconvenienced by a baby and therefore feel our lives are more important than the child. The Bible says we are dead in our trespasses, separated from God and suppressing the truth and unrighteousness. We know that killing a child in the womb is wrong, but we love our sin more. We are slaves to our sin and continue to return to it over and over like a dog returns to his vomit. But Jesus, being born of a virgin, lived a sinless life and went to the cross to bore the sins of those who would believe in Him. And because He died, if we died with Him, we will also live with Him. If we endure, we will also reign with Him. If we deny Him, He will also deny us. If we are faithless and He remains faithful, for He cannot deny Himself. I want to ask you tonight, if you were to die tonight and stand before God, what would He do with you? There's no more important question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Tommy Waltz.
I brought everybody a gift tonight each. City council member has a Bible. It has your name on it. I'd love to give you one. Could somebody pass it? Thank you ma'am so much. I would like you. All right, my name is Tommy Waltz. I live at 90 Herringbone Drive in Franklinton, North Carolina. And as I said when I first came up here, I think it was three months ago, I pray for each one of you every single week that you would apply justice and love righteousness. I brought you these Bibles, I put your names on them because I want you to value what I consider to be the most important book that anyone could ever give you. Even if you take it and put it in your office, take it and read it. Corey, Mayor McFarland, Ms. Crowder, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Steph, everybody here, I want you to read the Word of God. Psalm 139 says this, Psalm 139, verse 15 says this, that David is crying out to God saying, "God, you've put me together. You've knit me in my mother's wombs. You've made my parts." And that's not my opinion. That's not subjective culture's opinion. That's the God that created both heaven and earth. That's His truth and we should stand up for that. Now more than ever, we should stand up for it. Yakons County stood up for it. I want Raleigh to stand up for it. Corey, I know it's not popular. Ms. Kay, I know it's not popular, but I want you to stand up for it. Anyone who has a Christian conscience, we must stand, we have to. Black babies are dying, white babies are dying, Mexican babies are dying, Hispanic, whichever the political word is that's correct, they're dying by the thousands in Raleigh. I'm just here as a citizen, as a Christian, who want you to know that Jesus Christ came to die for all sins. He came to forgive the abortion-minded mom if she repents and places her faith in Christ, the abortion-minded dad, the city council member who's still undecided, who doesn't have the courage to stand. Find courage in Christ, do the right thing, be on the right side of history. Listen, we all have blind spots. I know I've got blind spots. The Bible helps correct my blind spots. It says in John 8:32, "You'll know the truth and the truth will set you free." Ms. Steph, the truth will set you free. Ms. Stewart, Mr. Cox, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Branch, Mayor McFarland. So thank you for your time. We're not going anywhere. This is a marathon, it's not a sprint and I don't want to say it, but I am, well, I guess I do want to say it. If we have to take your seats by the ballot box, then we will. May the fear of the Lord lead us to all to acknowledge in wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Kathy Firth.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Kathy Firth and I live at 3640 Armitage Drive, Wake Forest. As a Christian, I am here again this month to plead for the lives of our youngest neighbors and to ask that you make Raleigh an abortion-free zone and a sanctuary city for the unborn. As governing officials, you have a duty to bring abortion to an end as sworn in your oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States. In your oath, a promise was made to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. The very first of these blessings given in the Declaration of Independence is life. Our Constitution is designed to secure the blessings of liberty to our posterity. At a previous city council meeting, the city attorney stated that abortion is the law of the land and must be adhered to. I contend that it is not law, but a very poor judicial decision made against the sanctity of human life and the image bearers of God. Many falsely believe the lie that abortion is health care. I contend that abortion is not health care. Merriam-Webster defines health care as efforts made to maintain or restore physical, mental or emotional well-being, especially by trained and licensed professionals. This evening, I stand before you as a witness that abortion is not health care. When I was 16, I had an abortion. Not only did it end the life of my child, but my physical, mental and emotional well-being was not restored. Quite the contrary occurred. As a direct result of the taking of my child's life, I entered a time of drug addiction, alcoholism and severe depression. This lasted for many, many years. Ten years later, I conceived another child, but my child's life ended due to an ectopic pregnancy. This was caused by scar tissue from the abortion. I was diagnosed with chronic pelvic inflammatory disease. I developed a dermoid tumor and a hysterectomy was done at age 26. Thirty years after my abortion, the Lord granted me repentance for my sins and forgiveness by grace through the atonement of Jesus Christ, my Lord and my Savior. The guilt and shame that I had carried for so many years was finally taken from me. I am sharing this not to claim victimhood or to garner your sympathy. I am sharing this to show that abortion is not health care. There is neither health nor care in abortion. There is nothing of a caring nature in abortion. Abortion is the brutal murder of our children. God hates the shedding of innocent blood. Proverbs 6:17. Abortion has removed our posterity and our heritage. You must take a stand to protect our children and women that are being physically, emotionally, mentally and most importantly, spiritually damaged by abortion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next we have Kevin Creasy.
My name is Kevin Creasy. I reside at 2129 Baboah Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. I've been praying for you every day. My purpose this evening is to urge you to repent, believe the gospel and make Raleigh a sanctuary city for unborn babies. Romans 1:18, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men, who suppress the truth in unrighteousness." There are three big lies being perpetrated by our society today. Number one, that there is no God. Number two, that God is tolerant of sin and is somehow more lenient than He was from the Old Testament. And number three, that murdering unborn babies is okay. There is a God. Romans 1:20, "For the invisible things of Him from the creation of the world are clearly seen, being understood by the things that were made, even His eternal power and Godhead, so they are without excuse." Psalms 19:1, "The heavens declare the glory of God, and the expanse proclaims the work of His hands." The glory of God is revealed from the magnificent beauty of creation with God created and God, with man created in God's image. If one were to unravel human DNA, it would, it would stretch from here to the moon. God is not more tolerant of sin and He has not changed from the Old Testament. Romans 6:23, "For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life through Jesus Christ our Lord." Proverbs 14:12, "There's a way in which seemeth right unto a man, but the end thereof are the ways of death." Murdering unborn babies is not okay. When we remove God from the equation, it opens the door for atrocities like abortion. Exodus 20:13, "Thou shalt not kill." In Joshua 6:21, God's people destroyed the Canaanites by God's command. One of the abominations that the Canaanites were committing were sacrificing their babies. Romans 1:25, "Who changed the truth into a lie and worship and serve the creature more than the Creator." You see this when people worship Mother Earth. You can get into serious trouble for taking the life of an endangered species, but it's in our land, it's legal to murder unborn babies. I tell you, this is very unwise. God is loving and merciful, but raffling just. Romans 1:28, "For even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God turned them over to a reprobate mind to do those things which are not convenient." Sexual immorality and murder are listed on the list of depravity. Isaiah 55:6, "Seek the Lord while he may be found; call upon him while he is near." Romans 4:25 and 5:1, "He was delivered over to death for our trespasses; he was raised to life for our justification. Therefore, being justified by faith, we have peace with God through our Lord Jesus Christ." John 6:35, "Then Jesus declared, 'I am the bread of life; whoever comes to me will never go hungry; whoever believes in me will never be thirsty.'" In John 8:12, Jesus said, "I am the light of the world; whoever follows me will not walk in darkness, but will have the light of life." 1 Peter 3:18, "For Christ also suffered once for sins, the righteous for the unrighteous, to bring you to God. He was put to death in the body, but made alive in the spirit." So I urge you to repent, believe the gospel and make Raleigh a sanctuary city for unborn babies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we have Zach Braddy.
Well, good evening. My name is Zach Braddy. I live at 8528 Plymouth Hill Drive in Wake Forest. I am again, like my friends, urging you to repent of your sins, to turn to Jesus Christ in faith and to enact ordinances that would make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn. Back in June, when I was last here, we were subjected to racism and bigotry from the crowd and we were dismissed by many members of this council. Steph Mendel turned her back on several speakers walking out of the room before our last speaker had finished. Steph, your quoted in the paper is saying the following, "I have the right to not listen to what I don't want to listen to." With all due respect, Steph, you forfeited that right when you signed up to be a council member. If you don't want to listen to your constituents, you should please step down. Raleigh needs council members who will listen to all of their constituents, not just ones that they disagree with. She quoted it in public on the newspaper, so I want to address it. She said she didn't have to listen to the constituents.
Sir, you don't have the right to address individual members of this table. You address the bodies, not individuals.
In addition, she was also said that abortion should be safe, legal and rare. Outlawing abortion will only result in illegal abortions that are more dangerous. At first glance, this quote seems reasonable, but in reality, it's quite foolish. Is abortion ever really safe? Well, for the baby, it's not safe at all. Abortion is a barbaric murderous practice that ends in the baby's death and for the mother, women who murder their children are exponentially more likely to commit suicide, to battle depression, to develop cancer and to have difficulty conceiving again. This isn't how I would define safe. But also, the idea that abortion should be legal is also problematic. If abortion is legal, how can it also be rare? Legalizing child murder causes large swathes of our population to use it as a form of birth control. This can be seen in places like New York City where one out of every three babies that's conceived in New York City is murdered through abortion. Legalizing an activity doesn't make it rare, but makes it common and we have 60 million dead children at our feet to prove it. Finally, if abortion is a human right, why should it be rare? Why should the removal of clumps of cells be rare? Do we want tumor removal or cavity fillings or any other medical procedure to be rare? Of course not. Medical procedures that actually benefit people should be abundant. When the pro-death camp says that abortion should be rare, it indicates that they intrinsically know that it's not a medical procedure, but that it's murder. The fact is abortion should be criminalized. Simply because women may dangerously obtain abortions in back alleys should have no bearing on whether or not we keep murder legal. If that were true, we should also legalize other crimes like rape and pedophilia because after all, if men are forced to rape and molest in dark alleys, that would make it more dangerous and they might hurt themselves. Clearly, this kind of thinking is absurd, but it exposes the garbage argument of those who cry that criminalizing child murder would only lead to unsafe back alley abortions. Women who murder their children are not to be given a safe space to do so, but are to be treated as perpetrators of a crime and punished to the full extent of the law. And so council, I take full solace in knowing that if you don't act to save these babies, one day God will. One day Jesus Christ is going to return and He's going to put an end to this. And so I would urge you all, while you have the ability to do so, turn from your sins, turn to Jesus Christ, make Raleigh a sanctuary city for these unborn children. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Peter Firth.
My name is Peter Firth. I live in 3640 Armitage Drive, Wake Forest, and my main point is make abortion illegal and make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn. Abortion statistics come from two agencies basically, Guttmacher Institute, AGI and the Center for Disease Control, CDC. AGI reports on abortion every three years while the CDC reports annually. AGI does surveys from all known or suspected abortion providers in the U.S. CDC gets data from every abortion that's been reported to the state health departments. States such as California, Maryland and New Hampshire do not report abortion totals. We can only have approximations as only 58% of the queried providers responded to their last AGI survey. The remaining 42% of the abortions are estimated based upon the available state health department data. The information we have is generally two to three years old because of report lag. From 1973 to 2001, approximately 53 million abortions were reported. Nationally, the number of annual abortions doubled between 73 and 79, peaking in 1990. There was a decline in the number of abortions of about 6% in 2000 to 2009. Another decrease of about 2,000, 2% in 2014, 2015. North Carolina in 2015 showed a decrease of about, from 2006 to 2013, but a sharp increase starting in 2014 up to the present as far as we know. I personally believe that the numbers of abortions nationwide and statewide are underreported. There is no oversight of abortion mills that exist solely to abort children, such as the two murder businesses establishments here in Raleigh, Drake Circle and Jones Franklin Road. The surveys that AGI sends out can be ignored by abortionists. No one can verify or inspect what is actually going on in these places. They are totally autonomous. It's clear that we, even with minimal approximations here, 53 million children were slaughtered from 1973 to 2001, as I mentioned. 53 million babies. American mindset needs to change in that our most precious resource we have are our children and we need to move away from the current culture of death and self-centeredness to a righteousness that only comes through obedience of God's law. The pendulum of decency has swung far in the wrong direction. We find ourselves as a nation gone astray in self-absorption, glorifying perversion and demonizing the faith in the God who put us all here. As Christians, we come to speak out because we are a nation of rebels who rebelled against God. We are producing descendants who are also impudent and stubborn. We speak to the wicked to warn them from the coming wrath of God. If the wicked do not turn from his wickedness, he shall die in his iniquity. Turn to God by faith in Jesus Christ and live. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Fred Chauncey.
Mayor McFarland, councilors, I stand before you tonight ashamed and embarrassed. Ashamed that I'm not talking about roads, embarrassed that I'm not talking about rezoning. Tonight, I want to talk about paying my water bill, specifically paying by automatic charge to my credit card. I can pay by automatic draft from my checking account or I can pay from, by my credit card if I manually put in the information each month. So the technology is there to deduct a varying amount each month from my checking account. The technology is there to charge my credit card, but I cannot pay an automatic charge to my credit card. So a logical question I would think is, why do I want this? Well, why do I want it automatic? They say that old people have a tendency to forget. That could strike me any day. Second, it is time-consuming each month to go in and put in the information about my credit card. And third, I might be out of town when the bill is due. Now, why do I want it on my credit card? Well, my credit card company gives this annual summary of my expenditures and my checking account does not do that. I've given Yale an entire chain of emails that I sent to the utility department back in January requesting that they grant me this, the privilege of having my water bill paid automatically by credit card. And the last one I've given to each one of you, and that is from Karen Ray, and she says that it's not available because of a level of certification of security. Now granted, I'm not a security expert, but it seems to me that if a checking account number and the routing number can be made secure, then so could a credit card number. So to me, it seems that it's just a lack of will and my request from you tonight is to provide that will. Are there any questions that I might answer?
Do you want to have any questions?
No, I just have one for staff. I saw in the backup report that we're looking for fiscal year 21 to have this available. Is that?
That's, that's a possibility. If I could speak maybe just to us for a moment, as you may recall, you've seen a lot of stories across the country of increasing cybersecurity threats to local governments. Credit card numbers being stolen is one of the primary places where that occurs. So for organizations that store, in other words, keep credit card numbers, that represents a level of IT security that is a much, much, much higher standard to try to achieve to protect against those numbers from being stolen. So a lot of local governments don't keep that information, a lot of businesses don't either. That's why you have to manually enter it. So there is a security piece to that. Now, one way that, what you're noticing in the backup that you can get around that is you end up having those numbers secured by a third-party agency. is you end up having those numbers secured by a third-party agency that then allows that payment plan. And that's something we're currently looking at that we could consider for the following year. It does cost. There's a privilege for that service that you have to pay for rather than doing an automatic checking account bank draft or manually entering the credit card number. So, this is really just about PCI, the label is PCI security, for our information systems.
How does that differ from securing the checking account numbers and the routing numbers?
I am not a PCI compliance expert, and we'll be happy to provide that additional backup to you. But my understanding is that the credit card piece is more vulnerable than the checking account information. Those numbers can be accessed or routed easier than the checking account information. I'm not sure the technical explanation as to how that's the case, but we can certainly provide that to you in a follow-up report. The PCI requirements are regulations about how do you achieve security compliance, and the credit card standard is a lot higher.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next two speakers have, names have been withdrawn, Eric Braun and Audrey Thompson. That takes us to Zach Sunderland.
Hello. My name is Zach Sunderland. I'm here representing Haven Developers. We are a company currently working to develop, working with Wake County to develop permanent supportive housing in Raleigh at the property listed here in this request. The property that we're here to discuss is 3708 Rock Quarry Road, Rock Quarry in Sunnybrook. It's currently zoned residential mixed-use, three stories with conditional use. That conditional, as you may know, the RX3 base is a no-density-limit zone. But with the conditional use on the site, it has a density limit imposed on this parcel specifically, 14 units per acre. So, we're here to request a text amendment to just change that, 14 units an acre to 29 units per acre for a maximum of 68 units on this site. Again, this will be to develop permanent supportive housing, serving, 35% of the units will be serving 30% AMI in Wake County, so that's homeless or chronically homeless populations. 30% of those units will be serving 60% AMI, and then 35% of those units would be fair market value. Happy to answer any questions about the project, or about the zoning, or the text amendment request.
Anyone have any questions?
No, I've had a conversation with Zach, as well as the current property owner, as well as the CAC chair on this project, and I think it's a good project to move forward if it gets through the zoning process. So, I would definitely approve granting the request for the text change, zoning text change.
Yeah, I don't, you know, this is an unusual format to ask for this because we don't have any information, other than you're just standing up here. I haven't seen anything. I don't feel comfortable approving that.
So, what happens is, he still has to go through the zoning process. He's asking today for permission to go through our, the process we approve. When was it? About four months, five months ago?
It's been a while. It was reaction to state law that changes to zoning conditions have to be done through the text amendment process, and y'all require that to be authorized by the...
Towards a San Okay.
A petition of citizens.
Yeah, we're giving him permission to move forward.
To go ahead and go through the process. I think historically, you've just asked for a description of what those changes would be, and I think he's provided that.
Right.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion. I need a second.
Does that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Okay, next we have...
Just to clarify, maybe for myself, not a question for you, but for... So, normally, we see these as TCZ?
Yes. In the past, before this court case, that if you wanted to change a condition in a conditional-use zoning without changing the zoning district, you'd just file a rezoning. But if you're not changing the zoning district, you're only changing the text of the zoning case, then it's treated as a text amendment. So, it's sort of a hybrid. You may remember that the text amendment we did required a neighborhood meeting and all of the things you require for rezoning for your purposes. It's a rezoning, but you're given the go-ahead at the front end instead of just having them file it.
Councilmember Stewart Stevenson, when it comes back, if you approve it, it'll have that Z number. Once it's approved, to go through the rezoning process, it will have the Z number.
I think you may recall a ZTC.
Him starting, him starting the process.
He can start the process.
It'll be back.
It'll be back, yeah. Okay, Octavia Rainey.
Did he need that before he could even start the TCZ process?
Well, that's the way that the council decided to do it, is to use the same process you would use for a text amendment to the whole UDO to do a text amendment for an individual case.
Good afternoon. My name is Octavia Rainey, and I live at 1516 East Lane Street. Welcome back, Mayor McFarland.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to talk about the East College Park process. There was a house built on Fisher Street that is not in regulations. That house was supposed to be market rate, but that house is way over a market rate, close to a $500,000 house. Now, if you look at that, and you look at what the city said, that those would be low to market rate, that's not a market-rate house. So, I want to know, who is held responsible for that? You can't tear the house down. So, who is held responsible? Is it the city manager's office? Are they the oversight? Is it the city council? What would be the repercussions? That is a serious matter. You're talking about, in the first page that I passed out, you're talking about over 100 families was relocated from East College Park. What I'm asking for is, what was each property bought for? How much did each family get for relocation assistance? Where did the families move to? And I want this report. This is public information, so I want this information. I also want there to be repercussions. Who gave the oversight for this house? Who gave it? Was it the city manager's office? Because Larry, it's only Larry's office and the city manager's office. Where did they drop the ball at? Who's going to be responsible for this? You can't tear the house down. So, what is the repercussions? And this has a long-time effect on East College Park. So, I am very concerned about this. And Cliff Zinner shouldn't even be a developer. If we want to go way back, when I was working with the city, he didn't sell to blacks. So, I don't even know how he made it through Larry's process. I'm serious about that. I don't even think that questions were asked to developers. What is your makeup? When I saw the report that Larry gave, I want to make some recommendations. Number one, I want the racial makeup by developer. Don't give me the total. Give me by developer. What is the Section 3 over there? What is it? And I want to know by house, by each developer, what is the Section 3? Third, each of developers, the contractors, they're supposed to E-verify. Is that project being built by illegal workforce? Do they E-verify? I am serious about this, and I just think that it's time for some answers. It's time to stop building the edifice. It looks good, but there's a whole lot of issues here. And I want some answers, but I want my questions answered, and I would appreciate that. But something wrong with this picture.
Ms. Rainey? I agree with you. We've done some errors in this area, and we have, a couple of council members have really brought it to the management staff to address. I think if you have questions that you would like to be answered that you asked tonight, I think if you would write those questions out, or if you have them tonight, to...
Well, they're in my front page letter at the end, when you took to the second page.
And I will make sure that these questions get answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jonathan Powell.
Hello. I'm Jonathan Powell at 1201 Trillium Circle, Apartment B in Raleigh. So, I'm here on behalf of Oaks and Spokes. First, I wanted to mention that we ran a candidate questionnaire for the upcoming city council elections, and I just want to thank you all for answering. And anybody can see the answers at oaksandspokes.com, and it's questions about transportation in Raleigh. Another thing I wanted to speak about was the downtown bike plan. I know that currently, we have one funded bike route, or protected bike route through downtown Raleigh. I'm here to say that we need more, because, I mean, this will work really well with the BRT, with our current bus infrastructure, with the new Citric cycles. It will allow more people to cycle safer and more comfortably through downtown Raleigh. It will also enable us to reduce our carbon emissions by giving people low-carbon alternatives to private vehicles. And one thing that always comes up with bike lanes, especially protected bike lanes in downtown, is the trade-offs with other uses on the street. And one major concern is on-street parking. I think that there's an understandable fear of removing on-street parking by businesses that they would lose revenue and lose customers. But studies have shown that bike parking is actually more effective at getting customers to come, and bike lanes are more effective at getting customers to come because people on bikes generally spend the same amount, but they come more often. And you can get more bikes through a bike lane than you can get cars in a car lane. So, it's been shown that making places more pedestrian and bike-friendly can actually increase the economic activity of the area. So, please keep that in mind when you're faced with the hard trade-offs of having to remove on-street parking. Another thing that I wanted to mention was that we support the work that BPAC is doing, and would like you to accept their agenda for the year. I think they do a really good job of taking into account bikes and pedestrians in all of Raleigh's activities, and making good suggestions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Just a clarification. We did approve their work plan today in our morning session.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Sarah Jessica Farber.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff. My name is Sarah Jessica Farber. I live at 1313 Lyons Way. Last week, the Indy Week read an article about the Moloch trash bins with comments from the city's transportation director and the director of solid waste services. It was the most information the city has put out publicly since the Moloch trash bins went in, which is strange, since the city has its own communications department. In the Indy Week, the city admits that it didn't consult with M&amp;F Bank in deciding where to put the Molochs. The bank is one of few non-restaurant, street-level enterprises at Wilmington and Hargit Streets. It is the only black-owned business. With four city departments participating in the Moloch trash bin project, not a single person stopped to ask how this would appear to the neighbors and stakeholders of color. No one even knocked on the bank's door to ask. This is not okay. We cannot claim to be a progressive city or tout the best places to live awards we seem to get all the time if we do not deliberately include the interests of all of Raleigh in all of our work. There is zero excuse for having any city project go on without explicitly addressing racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. We must be actively anti-racist. I don't place the blame for this omission solely on the members of this body. You guys are elected officials here for two-year terms, and you have a lot on your plates. But we have a city manager and staff made up of career public servants who know how things get done, who actually get things done in the city. And apparently, that staff lacks an effective way to address or implement issues of racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. So, my question to you, as the body that oversees the city government, is what are you going to do going forward? Making this right with M&amp;F Bank is one thing. Making sure this never happens again is quite another. My neighbors who spoke up on behalf of the bank called this incident environmental racism, which speaks to the disproportionate impact of environmental hazards on people of color. But I want to name another kind of racism, casual racism. The power brokers and the city staff just didn't see M&amp;F Bank here, or its nearly-century-long history. They just weren't considered at all. I don't think this was act of animus. It was an omission. But we cannot do that again. We cannot ignore people of color and be the kind of city we want to and claim to be. And I am a big fan of Molochs. I love the art on them. I like not walking through rancid trash goo on the sidewalks, and I thought they were a huge improvement. But I place a much higher value on the dignity of my fellow Raleighites. And it seems to me that the implementation of the Moloch trash bins missed the mark here. I call on the city to create and empower an Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion to ensure that this never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have John Pugh.
Thank you, Sarah.
I would like to thank Sarah for providing probably the clearest description of what actually took place.
Good evening.
Hi.
How you doing?
Your t-shirt?
I'm wearing a suit. Things I do for you guys. Things I do for you guys. My name is John Pugh. I live at 1116 South State Street. I'm also the co-owner of House of Swain Clothing at 119 East Hargit Street in beautiful, albeit smelly, downtown Raleigh. I want to talk about a couple of things real quick, very quickly. 2018, you guys all know about the downtown livability survey that identified the rolling trash cans as the number-one issue as far as livability downtown. The city staff did an excellent job, I thought, of identifying an innovative solution that got rid of rats, and flies, and smells. It looked cool. People liked it. Or better yet, people ignored it. It's trash. That's the best you can do with that. Now, I've spent, I've talked to several hundred people at this point in the last few weeks. I'm now a huge advocate of trash in general. Sanitation workers that are worried about rats jumping out and getting rabies. Folks that sit by the R19 bus stop that had to sit six feet away from rolling, fetid, trash, open bins because the city just can't keep up with that. You know, in six days, we have to make a decision. Because in six days, on September 9th, the city's going to pull those Molochs out. The city department transportation has those things scheduled. Despite the fact that we're in the middle of festival season, despite the fact that we're preparing for a hurricane, September 9th in six days, it's going to cost the city, I've heard estimates anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 to $150,000, pick some big gaudy number. It's going to cost a lot of money for a program that's only in place for 26 days. Now, how did that come about? The staff, I thought, sure, they dropped the ball. They didn't contact every single business owner. They did not contact every stakeholder, sure. But in 72 hours, a small group of people with the right emails, with the right cellphone numbers, got a public sanitation project that was built on public land in a public right-of-way canceled. And it's going to cost the city a lot of money. It's going to cost the city a lot of face. This was a really cool program that worked very well, the first one of its kind in the country. Now, you can take the role of cynic, if you want to, and think that a small group of people with the right emails and the right cellphone numbers have the right to do this. Or you can take the role of transparency, because I have 2,351 people that the only damn thing they're asking for is to put a pause on this. Don't pull them out of the ground. Bring all the stakeholders in. Bring all the information. Bring some daylight to this decision. 2,351 people. All we're asking is just put a pause to this. Stop pulling them out of the ground. Let's get the right people to the right tables. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we're going to move to matters scheduled for public hearing.
Mayor, if I could, Mr. Curtis Johnson is now here.
Oh, okay.
We missed him earlier, so he is a little bit late arriving.
Curtis Johnson? Oh, hey.
Hey, Madam Mayor, hey, council. Pardon guys, I've been late doing some renovations on my house.
Pardon guys, I've been late doing some renovations on my house and I don't know. Anyway, I am actually back once again before council, because I'm contending misconduct on behalf of some of the police officers. I'm not saying all police officers in this city are bad, because I know some personally. One Officer Lane is a great officer. But I came probably a year ago, starting this quest to get a report of where I signed a trespass against a young lady a year ago that I was dealing with, and then she came back, knocked my windows out, and I had to call the officers back, and then it moved from not trespassing to breaking and entering, but they refused to even call CCBI to print my window. Then, on top of that, they insulted me by taking me to jail and giving her a taxi ride to, out by Triangle Mall. Well, since that time, last year, you asked the city manager to follow up with terminal affairs of the police department to get the report, so that you could get the report to get the report back to me. That hasn't happened in a year's time. And the last time I came, the city manager's made us comment to you, because you asked him, had he followed up, and he said, "I think so, but I'll check." But if not, he'll do it, and it still hasn't happened. And I have some of the documents that I got from a source stating some work determines misconduct by police officers. And it includes types of misconduct, of course, false confessions, intimidation, false arrest, false imprisonment, evidence spoilation, and my evidence was totally spoiled, because they didn't even, wouldn't even call CCBI to have my windows printed. And I know, I heard Mr. City Council, I mean, one of the city manager, mentioned this morning something about protocol. Now, I'm not a police officer, don't claim to be, but I am a landlord, and I've signed trespass papers against people before, and those people came back to the property, and when they came back, the police arrested them immediately on sight. Well, that didn't happen in my case. And I know we say liberty and justice for all, I have not received justice at all. And that's all I want is justice. Now, I heard Chief speaking of some of these programs that the police department do, and that's awesome, and I support that wholeheartedly. I also have a nonprofit organization, and I fight gang violence, it's called Mighty Men of Valor, and I was able to get a community grant of $5,000 from down on Martin Street, we all over there, when they were over there. But anyway, you know, the police department do great things, but I think some of them, they're supposed to wear honor, a badge of honor, but some of them, I know from my experience, where once, a couple of years ago, I was charged with DWI, and then went to court, and the judge totally threw it all out, because the lady stopped me, the police officer, because I had tenant windows on my car or something. But, you know, I would just like to have that report from the police department so that I can proceed with what I need to get resolution to this matter. Thanks.
Mayor, let the city manager's office follow up, Mr. Johnson. I think we do have a history of the report that he's referring to, and we just need to get more specifics about what he's asking for.
Okay. Could we, like, expedite it, since it's been quite some time?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not, I think we did provide some information, so I'm not sure what the disconnect is, but I will make sure that we follow up directly with Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, now we'll move to matters scheduled for public hearing. First is a business investment grant for Schmalz. Do we have a presentation on that, or do we just open, Mr. Manager, or do we? That's all right.
This is the same as the business investment grant you've already approved.
Right.
I mean, we can comment to it, but I would suggest you maybe just open the public hearing and see if there's any questions.
Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Business investment grant for Schmalz Incorporated. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, next we have a sidewalk petition for Colleton Road.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Kenneth Ritchie, Engineering Services, roadway design and construction, here to give you some background information on the Colleton Road sidewalk petition from Bertie Drive to Oakwood Avenue. The sidewalk petition and the recommendation made by staff was for a five-foot sidewalk on a three-and-a-half-foot grass strip set back from the curb along the east side. Approximate project length, 755 linear feet, with an estimated cost of $186,000. With regards to the response to petition, 11 property owners were petitioned, six responses were received, with six yes votes, zero no votes, and five non-responses. This first picture shows at the intersection of Bertie Drive, up Colleton Road towards Oakwood Avenue. This is continuing up Colleton Road approaching Oakwood Avenue. To note in these pictures, the sidewalk would be on the, on the east side, or on the right side of the screen. This continues up Colleton Road, continuing towards Oakwood, and this is where it would tie into the existing sidewalk on Oakwood Avenue. This is a map illustration of the voting, as well as a depiction of the sidewalk location. And I will gladly take any questions.
Okay, is there anyone?
Motion to approve.
Second, we're in a minutes of hearing.
I have to do the hearing.
I'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
For approval.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, next is sidewalk petition, West Rowan Street.
The next sidewalk petition, West Rowan Street, from Currituck Drive to Pamlico Drive. The recommendation with this project as well, a five-foot sidewalk, set three-and-a-half foot back from the curb along the west side. Approximate project length, 1,425 feet. Estimated cost, $250,000. 26 property owners were petitioned, we received responses from 18, 11 yes votes, no no votes for a 61% approval rating, and eight non-responses. This is starting at the intersection of Currituck, looking north along Rowan, towards Catawba. This is continuing along West Rowan Street towards Catawba. To note here, too, the sidewalk would be on the left side of the screen. This continues up Rowan, again, towards Pamlico and then Catawba, continuing along West Rowan. Further up, Rowan Street. And one of two maps highlighting the response with regards to the petition. Here's our second map, and I will gladly answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions before we open the hearing? Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Is there, I can't tell. Okay, if you want to speak to this item, come on down.
Hello, Council. My name is Sarah Sutherland, and I live at 4209 Rowan Street, and I initiated the petition. And I almost forgot about this council meeting, but I was on a walk down the street over to the North Hill Shopping Plaza, and the friend I was walking with as we were pushing the stroller, and someone drives by going 40, and they said, "Wouldn't it be nice if there was a sidewalk here?" And I said, "Oh, no, this little city council meeting tonight about the sidewalk." So here I am. So I want the sidewalk for a few reasons. We moved here about a year ago, and we really love the neighborhood, but we noticed that Rowan Street is used as a through street a lot, and so cars are going about 40 miles per hour, and we kind of viewed it as a family neighborhood, but this sort of prohibits from sending our son even to houses down, who's seven, to go and walk and see his friends. And so the sidewalk would help us a lot. We like to walk to Brooks Elementary, the farmer's market, and the shopping plaza. And that's one of the big things about it, is how walkable it is. It'd be great if we could connect the sidewalk between Currituck and Pamlico on Rowan Street and just have a continuous sidewalk there. And for those who aren't sold on safety, it's also great for property values and walkability. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
So, Mayor, this is in my district, I'll move for approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you very much. Next is sidewalk petition on Cobblestone Court.
This is the last one for me.
So this is the sidewalk petition for Cobblestone Court, from Ridge Road to the existing sidewalk along Cobblestone Court. Recommendation here, too, five-foot sidewalk on a three-and-a-half-foot setback from the curb along the north side of the street. The project length approximately 275 linear feet, with a projected cost of $70,000. Four property owners were petitioned, we received three yes votes and one no vote. This is looking at the corner of Cobblestone and Ridge Road. The sidewalk would be installed there along what is the right side, right side of the And certainly, within this picture, it would fill in the gap there shown on the north side between Ridge and the existing sidewalk. This is the petition map, and I will answer any questions.
Okay, any questions before we open the hearing? Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, come on down.
Good evening, my name is Glenn Taylor. I reside at 3206 Cobblestone Court, and my wife and I initiated the petition to finish the sidewalk. Previously, or prior to that, I built a subdivision on Cobblestone as part of my, my regular business, and we, the development added a section of sidewalk. There is that one missing piece from the corner to just above my property, and the sidewalk does continue all the way down the rest of the road into the cul-de-sac. In the winter months, when it's icy on the road, kids have to come walking up that street, and it's dangerous, and we'd just like to get it finished, so they have a safe place to walk. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
This is, I was going to say, this is in my district, I'd like to move for approval. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you all very much. Okay, the next item is petitioned annexations for various locations.
Before we begin, I just wanted to, I know we have an unusual number of annexations compared to normal this time around. I did want to note, in all cases, on annexations in general, if an annexation is denied, they can still, the petitioners can still hook up to city services. In this case, on the last one, on 3901 Ebenezer Church Road, that is not the case, and I did want to state that. On the policy guidance, it says there was just an inconsistency. It says it was out of the ETJ. It is not, there was an error on our part. But if, if that was denied, it would have to go to council again, just because I think the sewer is 500 feet away. So if it was denied and they still wanted to hook up to utilities, that would still have to go before council. I was notified by Public Utilities of that, that fact. So I just wanted to state that before we begin. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, and as always, we suggest that petitioners come here, and there may be people here who can speak for that as well.
Okay. So we will open the hearing and start with the first item, 4209 Stonewall Drive. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close. Go ahead.
Seems like recently we've had a couple cases where, I think this is the only non-contiguous one?
No, in this case, I believe they're all contiguous. There are a few, there is one that is non-contiguous, but it is within an unincorporated county pocket, so it's very close to the city boundaries, so.
I mean, the report says this one's not contiguous.
Correct, well, okay.
The question I'm trying to get around to is whether we were going to get into a situation where we're going to acquire easements across other properties to...
Okay.
The first one, Stonewall?
Yeah, that's, there we go, I'm sorry. I'm hitting the wrong button, because I'm not looking at the screen, I apologize for that. I'm not looking, I wasn't looking at the keyboard. Okay, there we go, on Stonewall. Yeah, in this case, this, this property is non-contiguous with corporate limits. There is, if we look at the, if we look at the photograph of the utilities here, it would have to come down Stonewall Drive. There is sewer and water that is close to this property, right about 300 feet.
So, there would be no easement required?
Not on this particular one, but it would be responsibility of the owner of the property to extend those, to connect to those utilities and make that connection, that's not the city's responsibility, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item, 4209 Stonewall Drive? Okay, we'll close the hearing on that one. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, Tomahawk Trail, 5233 Tomahawk Trail. Were there any questions for staff about that one? If not, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, 3424 Tryon Road?
3428, actually.
I'm sorry, 28 Tryon Road.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Sure.
Back to Mr. Stevenson's point, we had a case recently on Tryon Road where it was difficult to get sewer done.
Okay.
Is this one going to have the same issue on Tryon Road?
On this one, I believe that their utility is right past the property, if you look here in utility location. So there is, there wouldn't be any issue accessing those utilities. Water goes past the property on two sides, sewer goes through Tryon Road on the south side of the property.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there any one here that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, 4113 Pearl Road. Does anyone have any questions for staff on that before we open the hearing?
Can I see the sewer connections for this?
Yes, absolutely. Location, utility connections. So you've got sewer and water, an eight-inch line, and the water going straight to the southwest, or south, I'm sorry, southeastern corner of the property.
Okay.
Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, 5100...
Well, just curious.
Sure. There we go, sorry. Correct, correct. Well, it's, it, yeah, they would, they have an easement to get in there and to connect to that, so.
Okay, Beckham Street? What's the next one?
Yeah, that's part of the 5401 order for planned development.
Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, 0, Edwards Mill Road.
Is this Edwards Mill?
Correct.
So, this one's a little strange-looking.
Yeah. This was strange for us as well, so.
So, can you give us a little background on, in terms of sewer and connectivity to water sewer?
Sure. Actually, if you look to the north of the property, I'm going to put a little slice right there, that's, the petitioner is a Raleigh day school, they own that property to the north, and in the past, they had purchased that sliver of property to the south that they're looking to annex, and there was a recombination that was done in the past but had not been filed. When they went through to, they needed to construct a playground that would have gone over onto that second property, it was discovered that the recombination had not taken place. So in order to do the recombination, in order to get the permits to construct that playground, there won't be any utilities hooked up to this property, but they would annex. So those lots will be combined into one. They have access to sewer and water through the parcel that they own, which you see right there.
Larger parcel?
Yeah. So, same owners, and they're just putting the properties together as to make one parcel, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? And then lastly, is 3901 Ebenezer Church Road. And then lastly is 3901 Ebenezer Church Road. And this is the one you spoke about earlier?
Correct, this is actually within the ETJ. So under policy guidance in the staff report, it does say that it's outside the ETJ in one area. It's just something I didn't catch, I apologize, I'll double-check the next time, but...
So it is in the ETJ?
It is within the ETJ, correct.
Do you have the, again, the sewer and water maps to show?
All right, we have a petitioner here who may also want to say a few words. But, so, water goes on the eastern side of the property. And then you do have sewer on the, on the south along Ebenezer Church Road, but that would require an extension, so.
Extension to the sewer?
To the sewer line, correct.
Across their property?
Is it in the road?
I don't, I don't... Where is the sewer, where is it?
The green line to the south? I'm sorry, yeah, right there, if you see that arrow right there, green line to the south.
Okay.
Well, there's a little piece on the top that's next to it.
The applicant can speak to this as well, so.
And then all around, it's not, but they've got sewer.
Okay, we'll open the hearing.
Great, good evening, Michael Birch with Longley Law Partners. Also, Mr. Ann Hutt, the owner's here as well. So this is a copy of the current status of the corporate limits, so this is a contiguous request. This is currently within the ETJ. It has received approval for a conservation subdivision that will preserve over 40% of the site. And so as a condition of approval, we have to request annexation. I will let Mr. Ann Hutt speak to, obviously, water is immediately there at the site and available. And then I'll ask Mr. Ann Hutt to speak to sewer service. But all of the extension for sewer has been designed as a part of the construction drawing process as well. So I'll ask Mr. Ann Hutt to come up.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for giving me the time. As far as sewer is concerned, we're actually going, it kind of looks like we would go to the road at Ebenezer. But the fall, the land doesn't allow that, so you actually go in Stone Ridge Drive, and it's in the right-of-way of the road, up the road, to an existing easement. So the easement exists that goes down to an outfall, and I wish I could point, can I touch it?
Up on the top?
All right, so I, oh wow. So it goes up along here, right, in the sewer, in the road right-of-way. And then there's an easement right there that goes down to, and ties into an existing outfall. Oh, I was supposed to read something to you, too. It says, "My name is Tom Ann Hutt, and I'm the manager of Sanctuary Partners LLC, the new owner of 3901 Ebenezer Church Road. I want to express my consent as the new owner of the property to the pending annexation petition request." Thank you.
I have one question. This is on R2, so I'm assuming depending on annexation, rezoning cases coming forth?
No, sorry, it is a conservation subdivision under R2, and actually, we're below the two-unit-per-acre density as well.
Okay.
So there's no problem with that sewer, I mean, I see the line, but there's no problems when I talk about pump stations, okay?
That's right, the construction drawings are essentially approved pending annexation.
Motion to approve?
Wait a minute, has anybody else wanted to speak? Is there anyone else here that wants to speak to this item? Okay, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to approve?
Well, a question, second. Michael, so have you all had conversations with the folks over there in that subdivision about that driveway cutting in, tying in?
Yes, we have, and we've actually, you know, have a traffic engineer that was engaged. Again, we're only proposing 27 lots, and the only driveway, well, there's one back here, but there's also one kind of up here near the entrance as well. But are, given the low, extremely low number of lots, you know, the existing right-of-way and existing pavement and its condition is all sufficient for the subdivision. And we'll be putting in a new public road through our property, but will not, we'll be preserving 40% of the site.
Yeah, I had just heard from some of the neighbors concerned about adding more traffic on their road out there, but I don't see any up here tonight.
Okay, so we had a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next we have the Avant Ferry Corridor Study.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Danya Sandeep with City Planning Urban Design Center. So this item is the Avant Ferry Corridor Study Report and Recommendations, but we also have the associated comprehensive plan amendments, which are packaged as CP119 for your review tonight. Again, we are very excited to get to this phase, and I think not long ago, we had a work session, so I think council is fairly familiar with this project. So I'm gonna keep my presentation really brief and just give quick updates on what the planning commission has recommended on this report. So. So a quick recap, the corridor study really focused on Avant Ferry Road between Western Boulevard going all the way south to Tryon. Again, I think it's a great location, we have a lot of great assets, a lot of great neighborhoods, NC State Campus, it's in close proximity to Dix and Fulham Park. Again, also Lake Johnson Recreational Centers in the south. And also, we have the future Bus Rapid Transit corridor and the bus stop proposed right at the intersection of Avant Ferry. So a great corridor with a lot of opportunities. One of the major focus of the study was to look at how to improve the overall safety of the corridor for all of its users, pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. So quickly of the process, it was a multi-year planning process, we engaged more than 1,400-plus citizens. We had a survey that went out on the final recommendations, and we had a great support for all of those recommendations. I want to quickly recap the recommendations of the study. So we do have a custom streetscape plan that integrates complete streets principles. So we do have protected bike lanes, sidewalks, street trees, and a median. We also have a couple of policy changes to the future land use map and proposed street networks and greenway connections, improved pedestrian crossings, and also conceptual design recommendations for the two focus areas, which are the two commercial centers along the corridor, the Mission Valley Shopping Center, as well as the Avant Ferry Shopping Center. So we had a work session held in March, and the council referred this item to Planning Commission for their review. And in the process, you also had additional items you wanted the commission to review, so I will review those. The commission has reviewed and recommends approval, but they also recommend a few changes, which I will highlight in a bit. And again, both West and Southwest CAC recommends approval. So this is a list, and I'm gonna, the yellow bullets actually are items that the council referred to Planning Commission for review. So the first one was relating to evaluate the properties along Avant Ferry between Western Boulevard and Gorman Street to be more pedestrian-friendly with reduction of pedestrian conflict as well as vehicular parking between building facades and the streets. So to address this, Planning Commission recommends amending the urban form map to classify Avant Ferry as an urban thoroughfare from that segment from Western Boulevard to Gorman Street. And also adding a policy to the area plan for pedestrian-oriented urban form guidance. So the second item that was referred to Planning Commission was to evaluate the properties to the west of Avant Ferry Road and Tryon Road for potential mixed uses. The Planning Commission recommends adding an action to the area plan to consider future land use map changes to the entire area along Avant Ferry between I-40 and Tryon. This is an item that was not referred by council, but this came up during Planning Commission review. And it pertains to the street networks proposed for the Mission Valley Shopping Center site. What, again, we provided additional street networks as part of the design concepts for these focus areas. And we had included this in the comprehensive plan amendments to the streets plan in CP1C19. A petition was made to Planning Commission by York Properties, who currently manage the site. Again, the issue is not, they are very supportive of the redevelopment scenarios, but the issue with the street networks really ties into a larger UDO requirement that pertains to a change of tenant use and that kicking off the parking requirements, and in turn, kicking a site plan review process and dedication of future right-of-way requirements. Again, these are full redevelopment scenarios that we anticipate the street networks would apply. So the Planning Commission recommends removing this from the streets plan amendments at this point. However, this will continue to remain as part of the larger study report. And as an alternative, the Planning Commission recommends adding a policy language that street connectivity will be required should a rezoning come forward for the site. Again, quick note, with this larger UDO issue, we have a zoning staff, they are actually looking to work on a text change to address this. We understand that's a problem for large shopping centers where we're looking to a redevelopment scenario. And the last item, this is again, one referred by council, this is a future land use map change for approximately 60 acres to the west of Avant Ferry and Gorman Street intersection. The request is to change the future land use designation from moderate-density residential to medium-density residential. Again, medium-density allows a mix of single-family and multifamily housing and a max of three-to-four-story height limit. Staff assessment shows that the request is compatible and consistent with the surrounding land uses. So the Planning Commission recommends approval of that. So that pretty much concludes the Planning Commission's list of recommendations. Again, in recap, after the hearing, the council action requested would be to take separate motion on the Avant Ferry report, the streetscape plan, and the comprehensive plan amendments. We should have the resolutions attached to the reports. And again, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer that, but that's pretty much the quick recap.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item?
Good evening, Mac Paul, Morningstar Law, 421 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of York Family Properties and York Properties, that has a long-term lease and manages Mission Valley. Just wanted to applaud the work of staff and the community engagement. York Properties was very involved throughout the process, and I know they were substantial input, and they, you know, fully support the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The one clarification that they sought kind of at that point of the process was to ensure that the models that are shown in the plan that are really future visions of the development or redevelopment of Mission Valley would be triggered by a redevelopment and not just like a change of tenant. So we just wanted that clarity, that those images and visions would be, and they're very excited about it and would like to see the redevelopment occur. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing, Mr. Crowder, this is your district.
Yeah, so this is a big project, and there's been a few changes from the Planning Commission that I would like to maybe address with staff. So if we could hold this one until the next council meeting, that'll give me enough time to reach out and have a conversation about a couple of them.
Okay, so we'll just bring this back as a special item at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? So up at the Mission Valley Shopping Center, you said that the items would be removed from the street plan, right? What about these other proposed amendments at Tartan, Conifer, Simpkins?
They're all gonna be there. The only, the only, I mean, only streets plan amendment that Planning Commission recommends removing is to the Mission Valley site.
All the other ones?
All the other ones will be, yes. And again, that was based on the request, and an alternative policy language has been included. But it will still remain as part of the larger study report. We're just talking about the specific comprehensive plan amendment, which is CP1C19, where we're proposing to adopt that into the streets plan map.
Okay, our next item is the rezoning Z-719, 2003 Rock Quarry Road.
Good evening, so this is the one rezoning on your agenda tonight? So this is a little bit more than one and a half acres, just south of Interstate 40, which you can't quite see on this map. I-40 is a little bit to the north there. But at the intersection of Crosslink Road and Rock Quarry Road, it's at the Crosslink Shopping Center, if y'all are familiar where that is. You did see a rezoning, I guess about a year ago, just behind this parcel for some residential units there. So the request here, it's just to the south of that intersection, it's currently R4. The request is to rezone that to neighborhood mixed use, three stories, parking limited frontage, and there's some conditions, which I'll talk about. So you can see currently from that parcel on to the south, characterized right now by residential zoning, R4. You do have something of a node there of density and intensity at Crosslink and Rock Quarry. This would extend that, obviously, a little bit further to the south. The conditions that I mentioned, there are several, prohibit the townhouse or apartment building type, prohibit some uses chiefly bar and vehicle fuel sales, do require some transition to the east and a little bit to the south. And also address lighting and trash collection. Did get a negative vote from the South CAC, four in favor, 10 opposed when that was presented. Also not consistent with the future land use map, which designates this area as moderate-density residential. You can see here, it's divided by Rock Quarry Road, with the area on the west side designated for neighborhood mixed use, portion on this side for residential, moderate-density residential. So any approval of this rezoning would also amend the future land use map as well. Just a quick look at some of the consistent policies, there's a mix, several consistent, several inconsistent. Really boils down to how reasonable it is that that node at the intersection should be enlarged, extended, and whether this is the right use, whether commercial use is the right use here. So consistent generally with the idea of nodes near freeway interchanges, that overall the scale of what's being requested, three stories, relatively moderate commercial uses, is reflective of what's adjacent to it, at least to the north. But there's been some efforts at buffering and transitions, and that the scale, again, is reasonable. Inconsistent policies, I mentioned that it's not consistent with the future land use map, residential on the map, commercial being requested. Not fully successful on density transitions and transitional and buffer zone districts. Those generally are the idea that where you have more intense uses, retail, restaurant, adjacent to residential, typically the plan wants to have some intermediate district, maybe an office district or a more intensive residential district in between. And then housing variety shows up there because, as I mentioned, some of the actual, the more intensive housing uses that would add to housing supply have actually been prohibited by condition. So just to recap everything, Planning Commission took a look at this, recommended approval, six to four. Noted that it was inconsistent with the future land use map, but found consistent overall, compatible with the commercial area at that intersection, and did note outreach that the applicant has undertaken with some of the nearby residents. So that's all that I have, happy to answer questions if y'all have it.
I have a couple of questions, based on some conversations I've had. As far as the CAC denial vote, do you have notes on why they denied it? And has the applicant looked to address any of those?
I'll let the applicant speak to exactly how they've tried to address that as the conditions have evolved. I think generally speaking, traffic was the primary concern. Current zoning doesn't produce a lot of trips, there would be an increase.
Nothing there now.
Right.
Can I ask a question about the vote? Because in the backup material, it says the vote was 19 to six against, but in the other material, you said it was 10 to four, so...
That's right, so those are both correct, there were two separate votes.
Okay.
Held at subsequent months, I think the applicant came back for a second shot at it, but the second vote, the most recent vote was also negative.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll open it up, and I, we can ask applicant questions.
Okay. So, we'll open the hearing and remind everyone that on a rezoning, we allow eight minutes per side, eight minutes in support of the rezoning, and eight minutes in opposition. So, is there anyone here to speak in support of the rezoning case? Hi.
Hi, Amanda Mann, Morning Star Law Group, 421 Fayetteville Streets, Suite 530 here in Raleigh. I also have Joe Faulkner from the CE Group here tonight to briefly address any, you know, site-specific questions. And John Berger here is with the developer Premier Stores. So, I'm not going, given our time limit here, I'm not going to repeat a lot of what was just said. I would note that there is neighborhood mixed-use and office mixed-use to the north. There's also a good bit of commercial mix across Proctor Road. There's a Family Dollar and a gas station between the parcel and Proctor Road immediately to the north. There is a residential community and duplex homes to the south, as well as a church to the immediate south and southwest. I am going to ask Joe Faulkner to come up very briefly and address a few of the site constraints we have, and then I want to spend the balance of my time basically on the timeline and the outreach efforts.
Okay.
The, there was concerns at the, at the CAC meetings in regards to traffic, and so we reached out to NC DOT with a schematic plan of the intent of development on the project, and DOT gave us a preliminary approval for that driveway because of the business was so small. The site's only about 1.5 acres. I think it's actually less than that because of some of the right-of-way being, some property being in the right-of-way. There was also concerns regarding drainage on the site. Of course, we'll adhere to all the city's stormwater requirements, and there's an existing, as a matter of fact, there's actually an existing 18-inch pipe in the rear of the site for us to connect directly to. So, and part of the conditions that, and working, trying to work with the, through the CAC is we also left a, a pretty large area of the, rear of the property to be, not, to not be developed. So...
Is that a, is that a condition?
Yes, it relates to the 75-foot buffer to the rear.
Okay, let me go back and look.
What's the buffer to the, between this and the, the first residential property right to the south?
Do you need to look at it?
It's what, 50%?
About 50 feet.
50 feet.
Sometimes it is 50.
Do you want to measure? I have 10 yards of fluid on the side.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
So, do you have any specific conditions regarding the buffer to the, to the next residential lot right to the south?
Other than the transitional use buffers that would be required through the city's ordinance, we have reached out to the adjacent owner. That adjacent owner actually owns all of the parcels in that area, all the way back.
Oh.
Edwin Drive, those are rental units. Those are all rental units. We, you know, we at first were, you know, sort of interested in maybe bringing them in to, as part of this overall rezoning made more sense, but they, they just were too, they didn't want to get involved. They didn't mind what we were looking at doing, but they, they had no, they didn't want to be part of the rezoning process.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in support?
Well, I wanted to talk just a little bit about the timeline here, because I know it looks like this meandered through the system a little bit, and candidly, it did. We had the neighbor meeting back in February, and we had two attendees show up from the adjacent church. We have actually since then received a letter of support from the church, which I can provide a copy to the clerk, and I didn't print out my notes, and my iPad keeps turning black on me. I'm sorry about that.
Printed copy is always good.
So, I have a hard copy of this letter. Okay, so we had two attendees. Generally speaking, that conversation went pretty well. As I said, you know, we eventually got a letter of support there. We submitted the application on the 22nd of February. We did ask pretty quickly thereafter to start getting on the South CAC agenda. They are very busy, so we got kicked into the schedule a little bit. We had the first CAC meeting on April 8th. First Planning Commission meeting, we actually had to request deferral by virtue of the timeline. We did not have the CAC vote based on their schedule. They meet on a Monday, so we kept getting sort of caked into the net cycle. So, we got the deferral there. Then we went back to the CAC at this point. You know, we wanted to go and see about the vote. And as Steph pointed out accurately, you know, we had six in favor, 19 against. As Joe mentioned, the primary issues related to traffic and some general concerns on stormwater. We went to the May 14th Planning Commission meeting, and since we had gotten feedback from the CAC literally the day before, we requested a deferral again. And we went back, and we looked to add additional conditions, which we did. We did that on May 30th. We added the buffer condition, no impervious on the rear 75 feet, outdoor lighting to full cutoff, and regarding the locations of the dumpsters with respect to the southern property line. Then we went back to a third CAC meeting where the vote was four in favor and 10 against. So, we, we did, you know, work towards additional outreach during those times. We tried to add some conditions. As Joe indicated, the site is small. There's not much you can do with respect to traffic. There's some topographical constraints as well. So, we tried very hard to take in the input to the extent that we could, given the site parameters. We came back to the Planning Commission again in June. There was another motion to defer at that point. We came back at the end of June, where we ended up with this six-four vote. And here we are today. We feel like the impacts overall are going to be relatively small. There's going to be no traffic at all before 10 o'clock in the morning. You're not looking at huge peak trips here. And I believe the client actually told us that you're looking at a total daily customer count, you know, vehicular and pedestrian of maybe 250 trips. So, we don't feel like the impact here is going to be that large. It is the relocation of an existing store, same brand, new prototype, within the existing vicinity of this one. So, it's basically a reload of a restaurant use.
So, so, back to the traffic, I'm sorry. One, one of my concerns is we have the benefit and the pleasure of, of this being a major route for the Walnut, for the, I'm sorry, Coastal Federal Credit Union amphitheater. And when there's an event and traffic's backed up and someone's coming, and they need to make a left turn heading in the same direction, that will also make the conditions even worse. Has DOT, is there any way DOT has worked with you all since, I think you've worked with the Family Dollar as far as using the same entrance, as far as some type of turn lane or something?
I think, again, we developed a preliminary site plan and sent it DOT for the driveway connection, explained to them the type of use that was being proposed, and they had no problem. I think it's because it's such a, a single time which that happens. It's not during a peak AM or a peak PM trip time that you would typically have traffic issues. It's, it's just whenever that concert is going on, or any event there at the...
From May to, from May to September?
Which, yes, which affects the whole area.
Right.
Besides just this location, too.
I really want to talk to you all more about that, in, in that condition. And I would like to put this in Transit and Transportation Committee to, to have more conversation on what we can do, and also if I can even look at what you submitted to NC DOT, to have an idea. And my other question as well, and I know it's not within transportation, but as far as the stormwater, I know you said you would meet the requirements, but there's a big slope there, so...
Yes, very similar to, we, our device would be very similar to how the Family Dollar is next door. That device sits along the rear of the building and, and drains back out. You know, the thing to do will be, you know, we'll, we'll do enough over detention to where that outlet is not at any kind of a rose of velocity, and potentially would even tie directly into the pipe sys, existing pipe system.
Okay. Let me ask if there's anyone here that wants to speak in opposition. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to this case? Okay?
Got two questions for staff.
Okay.
Jason. First of all, let me just say the, the conditions that are in the backup, it's like it came through a broken fax machine. It's really hard to read, which is unfortunate. So, I mean, mine is all screwy.
We've realized that we need to fix that form so that it doesn't compress the...
So, so I'm looking at condition three that talks about prohibited uses, and I'm seeing Bar Nightclub Tavern Lounge, the typical high-impact next to residential. What, of course, there's a long list of NX limited and permitted uses. What, and I understand the applicant says they, they already have a specific use for this site, but if it, if we get the rezoning and it doesn't go through, what kind of high-impact uses would remain available for the redevelopment of this site?
Well, it certainly leaves retail, restaurant, with drive-through, personal service uses. Probably the, the retail and restaurant would be the more intensive of those that it would remain.
Okay.
After the conditions.
And so, actually, I had total, so what are the hours of operation limits on this case?
Conditions don't.
What are the hours of your business?
No, I don't care what the hours of their business. I want to know what we're going to grant for hours of operation.
There's no condition.
Not in the conditions.
Okay, so that's a, that's a big problem for me. And if they, if their business is going to do reasonable hours, let's just go ahead and condition it, so we don't have to worry about it. And then finally, there's this odd condition about no new, no impervious area within 75 feet of the Edwin Drive right-of-way. Now, I heard that being described as a condition that would prohibit a street connection. Is that the purpose of that, as far as you can tell?
I'm not going to speak to the intent. It does provide a, a measure of, I guess, a, a buffer of sorts on the east side. The language is pretty specific about impervious, so there's some things it would allow. It doesn't necessarily provide tree conservation. Presumably, pervious paving could be possible, but...
Yeah, I don't like that. I mean, if you're going to prohibit a street connection, just say you're not going to do a street connection.
There's certainly an outlet within, that's one of the permitted zoning conditions that can be less restrictive than code, is to specifically prohibit a street connection.
But then...
Modified block perimeter.
But then, just back to the general language of condition five, and it's, it's very mysterious. We don't know what you're trying to accomplish there. Be nice to know what you're trying to do.
We were trying to appease the CAC with some of the comments they had.
Well, what, what were they trying to accomplish, then?
I would not want to put words in their mouth.
But you're, you're trying to accomplish something here. I'm just asking what it is.
The intent was not to have any development along, you know, again, to help soften the, you know, topographically, I don't think you could make a road connection there if you wanted to, because this does fall off pretty, pretty extreme from the front to the rear.
So, my comment to your attorney is try to come up with some meaningful language.
Sure, we can work on that. And part of the balance that we have, as you know, is when we get, when we submit conditions and we get staff feedback, there are certain things that they don't particularly want us to say sometimes in such concrete ways, like we're going to prevent, you know, access points. I mean, we get pushback from time to time on that. But we can, we can sit down with the stakeholders. Again, we can go into the subcommittee. We can come up with language. We've all sat down before and come up with, with language on these conditions.
Okay, so now, having said all of that, I'm, I'm still not convinced that this is the right buffer use. You saw that long list of incompatible comp plan policies here, and even with, if all the things happen that we just discussed, I'm still not sure I'm going to support this case.
Understood.
Okay, so, we'll present it to Transportation, and we'll leave the hearing open.
All right.
Okay, so our next item...
Do you need a date certain?
Yes.
Well, we meet September 24th, so the earliest it could be would be October 1st.
We got a lot of cases on October 1st.
Yeah, so...
Fifteenth.
Yeah, 15th.
October 15th?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the next time it comes before council. That's the earliest. But we'll see this on September 24th.
In committee.
In committee.
And the hearing will be continued on the 15th.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next we have the 2030 Conference of Plan Update, CP2B19.
Yes, hi, good evening. Ira Mabel with City Planning Department. So, we are back again for the conference plan update. Probably remember from this afternoon, the, the update has been many years in the making. This particular phase was broken up into groups. So, Group A was four chapters that you all heard a public hearing earlier in the spring and adopted. The letter C had a public hearing in July, and again, this, this afternoon has a special item. So, tonight we have parts B and D. So, I'll just jump right in. The, the first group has the land use, transportation, and urban design chapters. The, the overarching theme for this group really is the Wake Transit Plan, so I'm going to talk a lot about that. And a, a big bulk of the changes for all three of these chapters are related to the consequences of implementing that plan. So, for starters, the land use chapter, which is where we primarily regulate the, the future development of the, the city, and every chapter has a set of slides that provide some scope, so I'm going to go through relatively quickly. Should be familiar with them over time. This is a pretty long section, 12 subsections ranging from citywide growth to retail industrial land uses, section about annexation, 81 policies, which is pretty high, 38 actions, seven of which are still active, so not too many actions in this one. And a lot of the action in the update has been revisions to policies, again, reflecting the Wake Transit Plan. But before we get to that, some policy highlights come next. So, development transition was a big topic during the outreach. There was a, a special themed meeting just about that, had a lot of activity on the online survey with this last phase of comments. So, there's some modification to the height guidance currently in the plan, really just clarifying some edge cases, or, an edge is a technical term. So, some cases where guidance overlaps, really guidance to staff about which, which policies prevail. There is a new policy for when tall development or mixed-use development is next to residential designation on the future land use map, talking about a 45-degree plane that building should fall under. So, this illustration showing step backs that would be required or recommended by this policy. This is some summary language. There are a couple of policies about small-scale uses, so accessory dwelling units. Again, this is where I'll mention this draft has been now before you for a while, so this language predates the adoption of this overlay, but the policy still is in effect or would be in effect. And another policy about micro retail, you'll see some more about these two things, as these three chapters really do relate to each other pretty strongly. A few about environmental land uses, so for remediating brownfields and planning around dicks in particular. The parks chapter, which we'll get to eventually, has a whole subsection about dicks, but this is the sort of representation in the land use, the land use chapter. The other changes not transit-related are really just a refinement of existing policies to make it more clear about their intent. So, there's an example of that about benefits, so directly related to how we evaluate zoning cases. And then moving into the transit, so, you know, a lot of the, the previous policy language in this chapter in transportation talked about transportation planning from 2009, which has now been out of date. So, a lot of fixed guideway replaced with BRT, for example. There's a new action about infill compatibility, so this is where I'll also say, part of the effect of having the review period last this long is that we have moved forward with some of these actions that you'll see tonight. So, this, this study is part of the department's work plan and has started recently with the public engagement part of that. So, the future land use map lives in this chapter. This is where I'd like to point out that, so this particular map, if you can't really see, but the small date in the corner says it was created in March of 2018. This, land uses have changed since then, so when rezoning cases that are inconsistent with this map come forward, the map changes. Avon Ferry has some map changes. So, those actions are already taken. You have adopted them. When this book is published, these maps will all reflect that. There is no need to amend this map to take a same action twice, so to speak. But this draft that you have is frozen in time from the fall of last year when we provided it to you. But this draft that you have is frozen in time from the fall of last year when we provided to you. So any other things you may have done since then will be reflected. And then going forward, in the biannual update of the plan, we will revise this map and the street plan map and anything else that does get amended by other actions. So the the big driver of this, the two big drivers for this changes in this chapter are the strategic plan and then the Wake Transit Plan. So we have a whole new subsection about implementing that. The the real technical work of the comprehensive plan update as a whole really stems back to the white paper from twenty sixteen. So that was after a few years of outreach that we had done, and the white paper was the planning department stating all of the changes we intended to make in a much more targeted way. And so all of the the backup material in the agenda item and then there are slides referencing the white paper a lot. So that was really our guidepost for this as the most recent time council had approved sort of the scope of work, so to speak. So I won't dwell overly much on these slides, but that is where a lot of these policies come from that I don't won't specifically mention directly. So ADUs, for example, was in there. Small commercial hubs was was in there. Dix Park was in the white paper. And then we've also made sure we we tie this back together, so mentioning the vision themes as sort of the guiding principles of all the work we were doing and how the update, the changes in the update are trying to advance those themes. So land use, you know, is affected by all of them and touches all of them, so really in support of advancing all of them over the the changes in this particular section. And then we had particular particular outreach with or in reach with transportation and Parks and Rec and Cultural Resources. So the the public outreach for this, and this is mostly I'm referring to the last round where we sort of tabulated all of the the results. There should be a spreadsheet in in each section where we've tracked all of that and each staff report, I should say. We got a lot about land use, nothing in particular warranted a a specific change. So these have been, believe it or not, these are just comprehensive plan amendments, all of these, so they have been through the regular process for a comp plan amendment. Planning Commission had minor recommendations. Those are all spelled out in more detail in the certified recommendation on each item. They requested some more information about missing middle, so we drafted a new text box to be inserted explaining that concept. A stronger reference to housing affordability and then designating some policies as key policies, so those are the ones in the draft with the orange dot which apply most often and most strongly to rezoning requests. So no changes to the language in those things, but just making them a little bit more clear that about the the import of those particular policies. All right, I'm going to run through these three and then we'll stop for questions.
Go back one. So on key policy composition, mixed use centers, I noticed that you were so you're highlighting that, but I also noticed that you're removing a policy UD two point six on the design of mixed use developments. So how do those two things work together?
They they do work together. I think the the policy in the urban design section. So to say briefly about key policies, they are a little particular in that the way we think about them is they're the policies where if you if you're not, if the policy is inconsistent with your rezoning request, for example, you are more likely to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Which is not the case for every policy. Sometimes policies just don't apply. They also usually have language that's more assertive, so they often say something shall do something else. So sometimes the key policy was removed because it did not meet one of those criteria. I don't recall that particular urban design policy. I can maybe when we get to that section.
Okay.
Circle back. I do know that the so the Planning Commission was looking for more guidance on what to look for when someone comes forward with either a large project or a downtown project about public space and other amenity area.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to launch us into a
Sure.
Long discussion here. The other thing that I did want to make note of is you talked about revising the height transition policy and I didn't see any reference to table LU two, but
See any there.
I know that in the past that table LU two has been the absolute focus of a lot of debate and so I'll just tell you right now, I don't want to get into it right now, but I would like to have some time to study what the new language is around what at least was table LU two and height transition policies.
Sure. That that table itself is unchanged. The the change to the language describing that table is really guide for staff. So sometimes it's up to interpretation on whether something falls into, there's three columns in that table. And it can be unclear as to what which one is which or what which one a case is which one. The transition policy is separate and new, so you're right, that is.
Okay. So I'd like to have some time to study that closely because you're exactly right. It was subject to a lot of different interpretations that didn't lead to predictable outcomes.
Absolutely. All right. Chapter two in this group is transportation. Going to talk a lot about transit again. Ten sections. This last one, number ten, is brand new about emerging technologies. So around the same number of policies, many more actions that are still in effect, about half of the sixty four that were in this chapter. So jumping right into transit, there's this section about public transportation was significantly rewritten to reflect the Wake Transit Plan. And these policies are new policies talking about service coordination, service service evaluation, efficiency, system appeal. So all related to implementing enhanced bus service throughout the city and throughout the county. There's some new policies in this transportation section also about transit technology, so different modes of transit, bike bike share and car share and other innovative technologies for the city to to investigate when planning for transit. And then the emerging technologies has a new subsection talking about more advanced and sometimes hypothetical technologies that we should be considering when planning for transportation, so automated vehicles, bike share. There are a couple of technologies asking us to rethink how we use the curb. This was also a pretty hot topic at Planning Commission, particularly about downtown and how we manage curb space. So a few new policies there about rethinking those, how the city handles that. Here's a new policy about safety. There are a couple of these. This one is about design in particular and speed and design speed of certain types of streets. A new policy or refinement to the traffic calming policy about including traffic calming when there's new connectivity and then an associated action for that. That's pretty a pretty common approach that we take for to have a companion action to implement a particular policy. So an example of that. And here's a great example of eight or so policies really implementing the or actions implementing the Wake Transit Plan and the other policies to support that support the Wake Transit Plan. There were three actions calling for new studies, so again, rethinking curb side space, rethinking how we handle parking demand and looking into the impact of automated vehicles might have on city streets. This is the transit facility, so you did have a, this is another example of where policy has sort of passed us. So in the this annual version of the transit offices or transit division plan, there was some new frequent bus network designated on even Ferry. So in that you already see that plan and approve that plan. It will be reflected on this map when it is published. And this one in particular, I know I inserted a new version of this map because we had it for your work session with that designation. Update to the bicycle facilities, this is a lot to do with the Parks Department. I'll talk more about them later and some a new map about or revision to the map interchanges more clearly defining where five forty is the current planning five forty will be. So this section heavily influenced by the transit plan and also the the bike rally plan headed up by Parks and Rec and Cultural Resources. White paper really referencing the Wake Transit Plan and the bike plan and to incorporate those things as well as the the five forty and other interchanges, so NCDOT policies to get sort of trickled down into local policy. The other thing, so there's a lot of places in the update where we are changing terminology. So the street design manual replaced the previous one from before two thousand nine. So some of the the streets, we no longer use thoroughfare, for example. So all of those instances were were updated to reflect the current adopted manuals and guides that we have.
Okay. So just thinking about conversations we've had recently on street designs where we staff has said manual says we got to put the bike lane in the street. And we're saying we'd really rather put it on the other side of the curb and so how is that updated philosophy about separated bicycle facilities being implemented here?
I can't recall if there's a particular policy advocating for protected facilities. I do know there's a lot there's many revisions that expand non-car modes of transport and including that in planning, so not just sidewalks specifically called out for sidewalks, but alternative modes of transportation. I don't think there's a policy that I can remember that's advocating specifically for protected bike lanes over on street.
So we do have comp plan transportation section does have a street map.
The street plan.
Street plan, and it describes all the different street designs that will be used in the city. So you're saying none of those street designs have been amended to change the way that.
No, no, so the street plan designates where new streets, we're expecting new streets that are important to the street network to be built and then designating the type, so avenue, two lane divided, et cetera. But really, the designer of those streets are held in the street design manual. So the comp plan is not superseding that. And the street plan itself has not been changed in this part of this update.
Okay, and again, the the point would be that the street designs don't specify in the comp plan how bike facilities will be handled. It all happens in the parallel document.
Right, so the comp plan just references the street design manual. That's correct.
Street design, okay. All right, thanks.
I have a process question. There's a lot of material here. I'm not comfortable. I'm voting for any of this tonight. Could we either hold this or perhaps put it in committee for a deeper dive? And I certainly don't want to keep these folks here until two in the morning.
So I have a suggestion. Why don't we take a couple of weeks, take some time to read through it, send your questions into staff, maybe Lou can coordinate all of those and we could either take it up at a work session or bring it back at a future time. It gives staff an opportunity to answer those questions.
It's reasonable.
Can we do that with number ten also?
Well, is the council amenable to that plan?
Sure.
I mean, that's that's fine. I mean, I think we originally scheduled these before we even went on break, but that's fine.
And we've had them since September of twenty eighteen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
That's fine.
But they were a work in process. Now we finally got the final package, so it would be nice to be able to review the final package in more detail.
So please get all of your questions about this item in in the next two weeks and then I think it'd probably be better if we scheduled a work session. Do we have any work sessions coming up?
Well, we were going to recommend canceling your October ninth work session because of what's on the docket, so you may want to do that anyway, but we have one in September on September tenth, which is next week.
Yeah.
Which doesn't sound like that's what you're talking about. And then you have another one, the second week of November, whatever that date is.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with the second week of November.
There's space on that meeting, if you like, for for both of them?
Yeah, it was eight and ten.
Sure.
That would also frankly drive you towards a a a date, so give you something to kind of look towards.
Well, I mean, I think like I I we've been looking at this a long time, so I think it's you know, I don't want to have the work session that it still linger on for a few more weeks, so that's the danger of putting it off till November.
Well, can I may I may I make another process suggestion? If you council would contact the council staff, whomever that is, and feed your questions into that, we can compile the questions, get some written responses, push those back out and you can read some of that material before you get to the work session. I hesitate to suggest a specific deadline or something, but maybe within the next two weeks.
Yeah, I would say within the next two weeks.
Give us the questions and then we can turn that around middle of October.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll should we close the hearing?
I believe it opened the hearing.
Open the hearing. That's right, I haven't opened it yet. We'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay. We'll close the hearing. Number nine is conference plan amendment CP three nineteen. So it looks like these are
Just map updates.
Five different items that.
Mm hmm. Yeah, this, me again. I can be very brief. So this is a housekeeping, staff initiated housekeeping amendment, really in response to change in state law. So in twenty seventeen, there was a change to state law that said when you approve a zoning case that's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, you have to amend the plan. And there was a period of time where if a case was consistent with the plan overall, but inconsistent with the future land use map, we were not changing the future land use map. So the current interpretation from the city attorney is that set of circumstances does require a change. So for that window where we were not operating under that paradigm, there were five, there were five rezoning cases that were approved like that. So this is really and right. And so now, moving forward, when this comes forward, we provide in the backup a proposed amendment to the future land use map. So this should be the first and only time that you have this type of action in front of you. But really, without without that, without having provided you that and without the motion containing direction from changing the map from the current designation to a new one, we have no record really of changing the map. So there's five of these. I can flip through them if you'd like.
I'm just going to open the hearing and see if there's anyone here that wants to speak to any of them. So the first one, I'll open the hearing, the first one is Z three eighteen, which is three properties on Carson Street. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Second one is Z nine eighteen, Stovall Drive, Markham Street and Kelford Street. Anyone here to speak to those? Okay, the third one is Z fourteen eighteen, Wake Forest Road. Next one is Z twenty six eighteen, twenty twenty five Traywick Road. Anyone here for that? And the last one is Z thirty one eighteen, Ridge Road and Maryland Drive. Is there anyone here for those? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the hearing.
Move forward.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, then that brings us to the twenty thirty comp plan update, which is Greenrally, which is Councilmember Mendel just asked if we could do include that in the so I'll. so I encourage everybody to read through this if you have, does anyone have any questions? I'll open the hearing at this time. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item?
Which item we discuss?
Now we're on 10, number 10, comprehensive plan update, the green print Ralleys.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the hearing. Unless anyone has any questions for staff, we'll...
Do we need to keep this one open, just like the other one?
Yes. You want to keep the hearing open?
No.
No, we closed the hearing.
Yeah, we closed the other one.
We did, oh.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I thought we left it open. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to make sure I know what we're doing.
Okay. So on number eight...
The two we've had the hearing, we closed the hearing.
Number 10, all the hearings are closed.
Councils to provide staff, council staff with their questions.
Whatever questions you have about that, so that when we get to the public work session, staff can respond.
Within the next two weeks.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so then that brings us to text change TC 1019, Willow Run South Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District.
Mark Hollins, City Planning. I'm pleased to bring you the last application of the evening. This is TC 10-19. It's for the Willow Run South NCOD. This text change would introduce a new Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District to the UDO for the Willow Run South neighborhood. The development consists of 33 acres and 38 developed parcels. This text change was initiated by the residents and the property owners of the Willow Run South subdivision. After an analysis for the predominant characteristics of this neighborhood, it was determined to preserve the current build character that a minimum required lot size of 32,670 square feet should be established to maintain the neighborhood. The planning commission took a vote of four to two in support of this text change, and they are in support of the change. And this would, again, just bring a, bring a change or bring the establishment of a lot minimum to this subdivision. Staff is available for any questions.
So if someone, as long as they keep the lot with, at the minimum, they can do whatever they want with their property?
It would be, well, within the requirements of the underlying zoning district. It would be the minimum lot size. It would be 32,670.
And the zoning is what, R, I'm trying to find it, I didn't see it in here.
R4, I think.
It is...
I would bet it's R4, but yeah.
It is R4.
R4.
It's R4, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for staff. What were the two votes opposed in the planning commission? What was that about?
From what I recall, the two votes that were opposed to it, they were, they were opposed to the minimum lots, to that lot size, that it was too large in number.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. But it's keeping, it's keeping it in character of the lot sizes that are there today.
Keeping in character, that's especially the average lot size within that development.
Okay. Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this item?
Mayor Rick Farland, members of the city council, at this late hour, I feel compelled to offer a special thank you to all of you for the service you do for Raleigh. And although I know you don't hear it very often, there are an awful lot of people in this great city cheering for your work and your success.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is George Fleming. I live at 7101 Catamount Court in the Willow Run South subdivision, where my family has lived since 1986. I speak here tonight more or less on behalf, not just of myself, but of the 90-plus percent of the 62 homeowners in Willow Run South who signed the Willow Run petition, which you heard before you in March. Thank you for listening to us then. A number of my neighbors are here tonight for this hearing, and I hope they will all be able to stand, please.
It has been a long night.
Stretch your legs.
The chairs are pretty comfortable here. Owing to the start of school, end of the summer, Labor Day weekend, and late time, all of which you guys know about, most of our younger families are not able to be here this evening and ask me to send their request for your continued support. We are, as a neighborhood and as neighbors, very passionate about this request and about conserving the physical beauty and neighborly harmony which characterize the Willow Run South neighborhood. At the city planning commission meeting, one of our young neighbors, who is not here with us this evening, Christine Flora, gave a beautiful statement. I'm just going to read you a short excerpt from it. "My husband and I moved to Willow Run after a long search for a neighborhood. We specifically wanted big lots for our kids to play in their own backyard and not on the street. We specifically wanted lots of trees and nature so our children could learn just by being surrounded by it. Our neighborhood is a small slice of nature's wonder in the middle of a growing and bustling city. We don't have to drive to visit nature. Our neighborhood hosts nature, including fox, coyotes, deer, owls." I could go on, but it might get scary. "We thank you for having the foresight to establish this NCOD process, which is the only way we see to avoid major controversy and disruption in the future to the fabric of our subdivision. We are exactly the kind of neighborhood that the NCOD was designed to cover. Our neighborhood boundaries are well-defined, and the beautiful physical character of our community has been conserved intact by all the residents since we were built out in the mid-1980s. I want to make sure we have given the council a very clear view of why we are asking for the NCOD. Our area is zoned R4. Our predominant characteristic is approximately 3/4 of an acre, which is our NCOD request. When the community was established, was first subdivided, approved by the city, there was a set of protective covenants that exist to this day that remain in force and have served us very well in preserving our community. But we know that despite our protective covenants, with an R4 zone, zoning, and no NCOD overlay, a buyer could apply to the city at some date for subdivision of lots. The city probably, given their technical standards, would approve that, which would then set the neighborhoods up so they would have to take legal action to preserve this area. We want to avoid that, because if lots start being built, trees clear-cut, and pricey houses squeezed in, and that has been the pattern in North Raleigh where something like this happens. If that happens in Willow Run, a unique and increasingly rare character will be lost. Residents of Willow Run have preserved the character of our neighborhood for more than 35 years. We know from the experience of other areas that we need the NCOD. Willow Run is incredible and intact. We are neighbors united, and we are asking for your continued leadership and support, because without it, we will face an uncertain future." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item?
So I just have a couple of words to add, and we've had a very long evening, so we won't hold you very long. I did want to mention that, so my wife...
Name and address.
Sorry, yes. My name is Ayman Fitzmaurice, and I live at 7209 Catamount Court, north in Raleigh, part of the Willow Run community. So my wife and I moved to Willow Run in 2005. And our kids at the time were in eighth grade, fifth grade, third grade, and we were looking for a neighborhood where they could, they could play with their friends, they could be out and about in a safe environment. And we thought that Willow Run was an amazing neighborhood and incredibly affordable. We couldn't believe that we could, we could have such a really nice home in such a nice area and for it to be so affordable. And we continue to feel really strongly about the neighborhood. We purchased it knowing that there were covenants in place to protect the character of the neighborhood. We wanted to be in a neighborhood that had the potential to have all the young families. And what we've seen in recent times with, with new purchasers or new neighbors moving in, is generally young couples who are coming in to start families and they move into the, into our neighborhood because it is so affordable. Everything is so convenient there. Within walking distance, we have, we have apartment complexes, we have duplexes, we have single-family homes all around us. So there's, there's already a large number of different types of, of homes in the area. Our concern is that if, if we allow lots in the area to be subdivided, that people will come in and purchase property, build additional homes, flip them, and that overall property prices will increase. And that will put it outside the reach of, of folks like us and folks like, like our neighbors who want to, to start families and have, have the opportunity to have a community like we did. We're also concerned that if that happens, that it will lead to legal litigation, and we would prefer to avoid that. And we prefer not to have a situation where the city inadvertently approves subdivision of a lot, and then neighbors start to, to litigate against one another. So that's, that's not the type of neighborhood that we would like to have. If you look at the overall neighborhood, there's only a couple of lots we believe that could be subdivided because of concerns about runoff and so on. So we really don't think that not allowing an NCOD for our neighborhood would, would really add to, to the overall puzzle for Raleigh in terms of affordable housing. So that's what we wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item?
Or against it? Are you against it?
It's not a rezone, so you can do either one.
Name and address, please.
David Almer, 2105 Cedar Bluff Court. The last time I was here, they were designed to protect the character and integrity of a neighborhood. That's somewhat loaded code for some people, but I'll, I mean, this, they've already stated the, the reason for this. Deed restrictions in an HOA may not get it done. Every other part of this city has to deal with change as we grow rapidly over the next 30 years. Whether it's a slightly taller building, you guys approved some townhomes, a rezone near my own house, thank you again. The city's growing fast. I want to be clear as to what we're preventing. You're preventing a few lots that might be subdivided over the next three to five years. One of these lots looks like it's missing the house and somebody accidentally put a gazebo there. With, not being too harsh, but I mean, everybody has to grow and deal with change in this city. This is patently unfair to use the force of Raleigh City Council to backstop some neighborhoods failing HOA and failing deed restrictions. Again, the horror that they're trying to stop is three or four nice homes with three or four new nice families. Whether the homes will be more expensive than the average $400,000 price that's in there, eh, I don't know. But this isn't really the job of Raleigh City Council. Once you guys get into micromanaging every neighborhood like it's an HOA, you create the resentment that some of you sometimes claim to dislike. You can't micromanage every neighborhood like this. You're going to have legal action. The opposite would be if you were to come in and create an HOA. Some people, like myself, bought into their neighborhoods specifically to avoid an HOA and things like this, where 80% or 75% or even 90% of the neighbors decide they don't want renters, or they don't want ADUs, or what have you. You can't do this. The whole city has to grow. You can't let one neighborhood decide they can't have just three or five more houses over the next decade. It's a nice neighborhood, yeah. I mean, I get that. I've driven through it several times. It's not too far from me. There's really no evil you're stopping here. And if they're going to litigate with each other over three or four new homes, I don't know what to do with these people anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item?
My name is Doug Ledson. I live at 801 Willow Run South Drive. Like, there's only one reason why I'd like to see, why I'm in opposition to this, is we don't know what's going to happen to the character of the, of the homeowners over the next 30, 40 years. When you establish this, you pretty much killed any, whatever changes might go in. It's not going to be in three or four years. It might be in 25, 30, or 40 years. The HOA, you know, they say, well, geez, we don't want to take a chance on litigation. I would like to know from the city attorney or the city manager, since you've initiated, which is great, I think it's very admirable, that you initiated a policy whereby you, you're required of any subdivision, whether it be a whole subdivision or a lot. You're required to send notice for, what is it, with, I'm sorry, 200 feet of that property. So it's not like nobody, we're going to have a big surprise here, and then after it's all done, we find out, now we're going to litigate it. It's going to be found out immediately at the start of the process. I really don't see, I mean, I have no interest in doing it. I ended up, because there's some misrepresentations going around the neighborhood, I ended up sending out a certified or a notarized letter explaining my position. But has there been any subdivision of lots where there's been litigation afterwards since the 200 feet notices come in? Because they would have called the city attorney to complain about it, or the town, or the city manager. I doubt it. In fact, I'd say it's all but impossible. I don't know anybody that would do it. And, you know, you could say, well, but, but, you know, what about if it's a poorer neighborhood where they couldn't afford it? I still don't see them doing it, because again, it's just not going to be worth it. They're right. Only six lots could ever be subdivided. That's it. No more. The only reason why I'd like to see it, and not now, it won't happen. It's not going to happen for another 30 years, because there's only 1.3 sales per year. Look over the last 10 years, that's what you'll see. So the likelihood that since there's only six that would be impacted, that you're going to get the majority over time, it's, I mean, it might never happen, and that's fine. Look, if the whole neighborhood doesn't want it, then let it stay, remain that way. But why initiate something where if in 30 years from now, the majority, majority of the neighbors finally see a reasoning for, hey, maybe it would be all right to have, you know, we've had some homes going way, way down here, you know, not being taken care of. Maybe, you know, we have the ability to split one of those six lots, maybe get a little nicer home in there, to build up the neighborhood. I mean, I'm putting so many improvements on my property, half have been for repairs, because the house wasn't taken care of, but the other have been for upgrades. Just, and, you know, I, look, I know I won't get my money out, because again, I've gone way over what the market is now, but that's okay. I made that decision. But again, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, the protective covenants does prevent this from happening. And they say, wow, we don't want to get into litigation later on. All it would take is a letter, and that will be sufficient. I mean, once I got informed, I went to the architectural board, they were against it, talked to two of my neighbors, you could see they were against it. I was done. I wouldn't even want to go try talking to the neighbors. Why should I?
Thank you.
Wouldn't happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, then we'll close the hearing and bring it back for discussion.
So mayor, this is, this is in my district. I've worked with these folks for, I guess, going on almost a year now. And, you know, in my opinion, this is a perfect candidate for an NCOD. How many times do we see neighborhoods that over 90% of the folks that live there in agreement on anything? And, you know, this is for the integrity of the neighborhood and to keep it that way, so I move for approval.
Second.
And also, I move, yeah, thank you. And also move to adopt the proposed consistency statement, date is September 3rd, 2019, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
I'd like to just quickly share. I really appreciate how much you love your neighborhood, how much you love the character of your neighborhood, how, how well y'all are working together. I have some challenges or different feelings about this tool, which I've shared here with council before, and Mr. Thompson and I talked about it this afternoon. I am going to be voting against this because I have issues with the tool, not with your neighborhood or your love for your neighborhood, but we've pulled that tool into one of our committees and are going to be doing a deep dive on that and looking at it more holistically, but I will be voting against this.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say that you used the tool that was available for you to use, and it's something that we have to fix. I do have to say, of all the NCODs I've seen in the last nine months, this is the one I think actually makes sense of everything I've seen of all the NCODs. So I have my concerns and issues with how we've been going, but because this one actually makes sense to me, this one, I will support this one.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, so I appreciate that there are many neighborhoods in Raleigh that have protective covenants that, that really protect them from the kind of subdivision concerns that you're talking about here, and I understand... you're talking about here, and I understand, and, of course, we created the NCOD long before any of us were up here to protect neighborhoods from gentrification is really what it comes down to, and in all the times that we have applied it, I think that really is generally what the folks are trying to do. They just want to protect their neighborhoods from gentrification. And, of course, on the flip side, there's folks who now say, well, single-family zoning, that's a former, that's a form of our past segregationist policy, so there's, I'll just go, rather than trying to answer that, either way, Councilor Stewart did say we are going to have a citywide conversation about how we feel about zoning and NCODs and densification, and try to decide as, as a whole city, how we feel about what we should do to either protect or redevelop or preserve our neighborhood. So, I don't think it's a great idea for us to say, well, you brought the tool that makes sense that we put out there for you to use, and now, we're going to say, no, we don't want you to use it, so I'm going to support this case.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that is the end of this meeting. No other matters? Nope, sorry.
Just a quick check in, we are planning to cancel the October 9th work session. Is that okay by consensus?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.